I'd like to get the planning board meeting going, call it to order. It is 6:02 on July 11th, Tuesday. This is being broadcast live and recorded. So first up, our administrative items. And the first one is an approval not required A and R for parcel 23-47 and 47B. File number 23-022A, request by the applicant for endorsement of a two lot plan of land located at 17 Franklin Street, Assessor's map 33 lot 7 and 47B.
Good evening, my name is John Romano, I have Xenith Land Surveyors in Bedford. Terry McGovern was gonna come tonight, he's the one that did most of this survey work, but he's got a conflict in Dartmouth, so I'm gonna fill issues as best I can. What you're looking at on the screen, the Santos family owns two houses on one piece of property prior to subdivision control law under the checklist, I think it's item number four. If the houses are constructed prior to subdivision control law, which Mrs. Santos has been there for 73 years, you can subdivide. What they would like to do, she currently lives in number 17, would like to sell this house up front to her grandson who is here tonight. But financing wise, he can't, can't get any financing without it being separated on its own property, so that's basically what we're trying to do here, divide this line, because right now it's just one big rectangle. It has frontage, it does not meet current, the 60,000 square foot minimum, but it does have, so we're left with 16,143 square feet on the ones that hunt lot here, and then remaining here is 35,736 square feet. And we'd like to get approval of those two lots.
Okay, so we have to determine whether or not it's a subdivision, under the subdivision control. And there are a lot of some parameters to do that, it has to be on a way or a way in existence. And Franklin Street, is that a way in existence?
Yes.
Or is that a paper street?
No, it's a way in existence, it's a private way in existence, 40 feet in width. But again, it shows on a lot of old subdivision plans for this whole neighborhood.
Is it constructed?
It's used as a, for, I guess a few houses, right? Just a few houses that, there's a few homes that use Franklin as access. Three houses that, that use it for access, yes. I believe this is the end of it, right here, just past the second house.
Well, the paper street Franklin Avenue goes.
Continues on, yes.
Way down, so.
Correct.
And there's a building in there. Whose building is in the road?
Susan, I'm gonna defer to you, there's a building in the middle of the street on Franklin, is that, do you know who owns that? This little building right here, steel garage. Do you do it?
She owns it.
Excuse me? Oh, I guess it's more football.
And, so the assessor, oops, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The assessor's office, at least on the PIS, says that house number 17 was built in 1967. And subdivision control came into Westport in 1957.
Yeah, somewhere with that. I thought they both were constructed prior to subdivision control law. Susan, the first house was constructed when? Out front.
Nineteen fifty.
And the second house was created when? Several, so she's right. They're not.
Jim, can I jump in?
Yep.
So whoever had filled out the Form A selected option four on that form, which spells out something is not an A and R if it's, has two buildings on it, built on it before 1957. I think they selected the wrong one, which is fine, in our view, or the planner's view. And that, because it's, they should have selected option two on the Form A, which is the standard A and R criteria, that the, that the lots must be shown on one of three types of ways, they must meet the minimum frontage requirements of 150 feet, and that the planning board must determine the vital access, that there's vital access provided to those lots.
Gotcha.
So, I think it still falls within the A and R criteria, they just, I think they selected the wrong.
Wrong box, right? I agree. Now I'm wondering if this should be going to ZBA first?
You can, so you can still submit for an A and R and it not meet the zoning criteria. So there's, there's a block in the endorsement, of the signature endorsement, that says the planning board is not determining that these are buildable lots. So, you could approach the zoning board appeals, this if you would like, for a different, you know, something different for consideration, but that's a separate altogether from the division of the lots, which is the, the planning board's purview.
So, I think the way that the law reads is to do what you're trying to do, you have to have two buildings on the lot that were built before subdivision control, so before 1957. And then you can split it in two, but I don't think you can use that 1957 house as the building.
Correct.
Now, I don't know if there's other buildings on the lot that predate 1957. And if they do, we need to have some kind of, some kind of statement or evidence that the building existed before 1957. I know what you'd like to do, and when you do it, though, the grandfathering that you have on the lot, because the lot's substandard already, I guess, goes away. So now, you have two lots that are not compliant with zoning, and so you wouldn't be able to expand or make them less compliant than you're already doing. So, for instance, on the front lot, you could knock down that building and build a three bedroom building, because zoning board wouldn't let you do that, or the building inspector probably would not give you a building for that. Same with a septic system. If you wanted to get a three bedroom septic system on that lot, I don't think that the Board of Health would allow you to do that, because you'd need 10,000 square feet per bed on the lot, so.
So again, I just wanna state that the, there are four different ways you can determine whether or not something is not a subdivision. The question of the buildings being built before subdivision law is one of those four, one of those four ways to determine it's not a subdivision. Another way to determine whether or not something is a subdivision is, are those three standards that I had stated, stated previously, that the lots front on one of three types of ways, that meets minimum frontage requirements and so forth? And so that's, that's, I think, the criteria here that we would be reviewing it, is just whether it meets those three criteria.
And there's, there's case law about this, referred to as Sitco, which had to do with Sitco Petroleum in the town of Rain Tree back in the early eighties, that, there's some case law that said that what they wrote in the law, 81L, 81L?
Yeah, 81L, I think, yeah.
They did it with eyes wide open, they meant it, so.
Fortunately, I don't know a ton about the project, but I'm curious to see when Franklin Avenue was created, as a private way. We have that.
It's been a long time ago, but I don't know how long.
It shows on a few plans from the eighties, I have got a lot of plan here from 1967.
I think the subdivision was done by Warren Mesier, and I'm not sure exactly when he did that. He's still around, so it can't be really, really ancient, but it could be, you know, it could be 1950 when the, when this other building was put up, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm looking for that, can I just ask about the condition of the, referring to Mr. Beres criteria for finding, for approval not required, that the condition of the way, the existing way, says it's gravel, is it adequate to, we don't know, do we, whether it's adequate to support emergency vehicles, is it properly graded, or is there flooding or puddling, ponding on?
I'm gonna defer that to Mrs. Santos, because I've never been to the site, unfortunately.
The gravel, we got one on this.
Because I've never been to the site, and you're gonna have to answer this as best you can, the gravel road, have you ever had an emergency vehicle, ambulance, fire truck, anyone go down there, have any issues?
I've had, we've had ambulances, and we do take care of the road, we're in the process of doing it again, we do it every so often, and it's, you know, we, that's.
And you maintain, you plow it?
Plow it. I just have to plow.
And there's no ponding along the way itself, or?
No, it's a hill, slight, slight range.
You know the other buildings on the property that are close to the larger house? There's one back in the trees.
I'm sorry, I can't.
If you look on the, show, there's another building on that lot.
The first shed, the same.
Yes.
That belongs to the house, that's house on the one. Most people are on the one.
Curious as to how old these buildings are here, the small old buildings here, shed.
This is, this is on my land.
Right, this is your house here, yep.
Yep.
Should be right on this.
Yep. And I have a small shed, this is, small shed there, this one down here, that was, if you don't screw that, that's the corner house, corner house, Sanford and Franklin, that is, it's not my house.
But the one, you live in the bigger of the two houses?
Number seven, house number 17, yes.
So, on that same, if you keep on going beyond your house.
Yep.
There's another building in the woods there.
Shed.
Shed.
That's mine.
And that was?
It's on my land.
1967 or about, when was that built?
The shed was later, I'm not sure exactly where the shed was. That's on my land, it's not on the road. Are you talking about the?
Not the one on the road, but.
I think this one here.
Yep. I'm not exactly sure where that is.
What we're trying to determine is this adequate access for emergency vehicles? And again, I haven't finished the site.
I've had, this is up there, please the bottoms come up.
So, we're gonna hand it back to Michael.
It's only me and my son.
So the question is, if neither of the two buildings on that lot date to before subdivision control, can they split the lot like this with an A and R?
I would say, yes, they can split the lot with an A and R like this, that would be our office's recommendation to the planning board, is to endorse this plan, because, again, we find that it meets criteria, or meets section two of Form A, which again, are those three standards to, has to adequately front on a public way, meet 150 feet of frontage and so forth.
Do they have 150 feet of frontage?
Both lots.
Yes, yep. 202 and 446 goes obviously beyond where the gravel road is, which probably has about 150 feet at least.
Yeah, lot two has 202 feet of frontage, and lot, or lot one has 202, and lot two has about 446 feet of frontage.
But they don't have area.
Correct.
They are deficient in area, and that's why on the plan, it's noted that endorsement of the A and R does not constitute the planning board verifying that these are buildable
What is the? I would say, I mean, if the applicant understands the risk, they may not, you could divide this property, but there's no guarantee, as the chairman stated, that you could get a building from it. Wanted to redo what tear down, or to be, is there no guarantee that she could even keep both houses?
Right.
Because if one, if they're determined not to be buildable.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
I think, I think if you lose the pre-existing non-conformity if you do this, if you divide this, you do way with your historic ability to do anything. I think you can, I'm not the zoning enforcement officer, I think you can still keep the two buildings, but if you wanted to alter them in any substantial way, I'm not sure that you could do that.
So I can improve one of the buildings, maybe even seven years old, to be improved?
The interior of the structure, I think, would be fine, I would, I would, you know, make sure to, if you were to do anything, contact the building inspector, at least he'll, he'll have the final call on that. I guess, the concern is that with the creating two non-conforming lots, I don't know if the non, so right now, the site has two non-conforming, or it has an additional house on the lot, and you're not supposed to have that. By creating two lots, on a lot that is deficient in lot area, you're creating non-conformities there. And so, let's say if there's a situation where, you know, one of those houses burned down, and you need to come and apply for a permit to rebuild that house, I don't know that the legal, if you have a legal right to rebuild that non-conformity.
Tax, or some kind of house.
We're doing one thing, obviously, it's two houses on one lot, by doing this, it does clear up one item, but you're creating another.
A separate, yeah, issue, because it's deficient in lots, that's correct.
So, the smaller house is, if you went to the zoning board, if you kept it on, both on one lot, without splitting the lots.
Right.
I think you could get a variance maybe from the zoning board to consider that smaller house as a detached accessory apartment. The largest you can do that with right now is 900 square feet, I believe, and so, this is a little bit bigger, and they may give you a waiver for that, and give you, I don't know what they give you, but they give you a permit to have two houses, these two houses on that one lot, so you would be then conforming, but that doesn't split it off so that you could sell it, or give it to somebody else.
Could it give it to a family then, then?
You can't split the title, you can't split the title, so it would have to be one ownership to do that, but you could get it so it was compliant, so that if you had, if one of them burned down, you could get a permit to rebuild it. But, I don't know what would happen today if you did that, I mean, you have a non-conformity, but it's an historic non-conformity.
I have, there's a piece of property on Bear Avenue, the same size as the one I got, they got five buildings, three, four duplexes, and a single family house, on the same lot I have.
Yeah, obviously, the neighborhood is.
I'm not going to.
Mostly undersized.
I'm not going to add anything, I just want to divide it, restore the house.
You know, if wishes were fishes, we could say, yes, sure, but we have to conform with the law, and our law is by the town by law.
My house is up by the law.
Huh?
Years ago, it's up by.
I know, I know. But, so, I don't know, so, we were sort of hoping that your shed was older than the house, so that you could use that as the building on the lot.
Yeah, well.
That your shed was older than the house that predated, has to predate subdivision control, 1957 and Eastport, but obviously, that's not the case.
The shed has to be older than the house?
We're just trying to have.
So, I think, what I gathered from the planner, is that you are entitled to what you are requesting. What the chairman is pointing out, is that this division into two lots would allow you to do what you came seeking to do, which is to then sell the property to your son. What you might find out, and what the chairman is trying to caution you about, is that should things change, and you find that you need to improve either property, you may find, or your son may find, that you're not able to do it, because you have created two non-conforming lots, and that you're then in a pickle. Now, the chairman is trying to make you see that in advance, so that you don't come back here and say, well, wait a minute, you, you let me get myself in trouble. We're trying to tell you that that's a possibility, because buildings sometimes need to be approved, but if, knowing all of that, you want this approval not required, the planner says that you're entitled to it, and if you want to take that, knowing all of that, I think it meets the criteria, and at least I'd be prepared to give you that. But, the chairman and the board is trying to say there's some risk involved in that. So if you know that, you're, you're an adult, you're aware of that, I certainly understand why you'd want to divide that, sell it to your son, so that as you said, he could get a mortgage on it. Bank may also say, well, you know, risk is.
They told me they would release the, for the I N F law.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a suggestion, I'm wondering if we can endorse the A and R and bring it to the billing inspector, don't record it, we have six months to record it.
Yeah.
Don't record it, but get a letter from the billing inspector, you know, we've got this approved, but are we gonna run into?
Yeah, that could be a great idea.
A roadblock. I say we do that.
It could probably also be a problem to try to finance the other lot.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at with the bank, they don't.
The bank's gonna release that lot, but then you're gonna look for another bank to pick up a mortgage on it, they might have a problem answer.
So, you know, I think the smaller house is one or two bedrooms, you know.
The small house, how many bedrooms?
Two.
Two.
Two. So you're probably gonna be stuck with two bedrooms, and you're not gonna be able to get a three bedroom.
No, the house is a three bedroom.
The front, the front house is three? This house here?
This house is a three bedroom.
And how many bedrooms is this?
This, two each one house.
So there's four in that one.
And the septic systems are separate?
Yes, I see the septic up front for this one and up back for this one, so yeah, there are two separate systems.
So, if you still want to go forward, that, and?
I think, Susan, what I'd like to do is have them endorse the plan, we don't need to record it, we'll have a conversation with the billing inspector, and get his opinion, if he says, don't do this, we don't. I'd like to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a, we have a non-conformity here of having two buildings on the same lot, and neither building meets today's setbacks, so I think in the division, if we endorse the plan, this, this don't constitute building lots, I think we could do that. And, which is the greater of the two non-conformities, that by two lots, we have the two houses on the same lot, so I, but I think the risk is really that they're probably gonna be stuck with the footprint of these buildings, that once, if we endorse this plan, once you have those lots, then you're not gonna be able to increase the non-conformity, so you couldn't add that kind of stuff, in a way that puts you closer to the street, or any of those kinds of things. So I think the idea of having the conversation with the billing inspector is fine.
So, I think that it works, if, if one or more of them burn down, I think you'd have to comply with the setbacks, so you'd have to move them back on the street with the building inspector, but that's not up to us.
Gotcha.
Just trying to let you know, so.
You could go the other way, I mean, you have to go to the billing inspector first, and then you get some assurances that if you proceed with this A and R, that you would then be able to do X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, if the board. Yeah, I mean, I think, I like the idea of getting it endorsed now and save these people engineering costs and so forth. Go that, that route instead of having, you know, like, obviously, you guys are busy. You've got other things to do.
Just that they're at their own peril.
Right.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we endorse the A and R for parcel 2347 and 47B because it meets the requirements as stated by the town planner.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, Michael can sign it tomorrow or?
Okay.
We're going to sign it. Or if I'm not around A, they can sign it.
Curious, did you, was the Mylar delivered to you from our office?
Maybe I have the Mylar.
Yes, I think Rachel from our office did write it a couple of weeks ago.
It must be in the office.
Yeah, we'll check tomorrow.
All right.
There is a Mylar on the thing, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next up is a definitive subdivision 431 Fisher Road called Stacy Lane, file number 20-002 SPA-C. We need to vote on surety amount for the incomplete work.
So, Derek Sw. Cole proposed a site visit late June for this definitive subdivision. He provided a overview of what is not done and what has been done and provided us with a surety estimate. And the surety estimate provided us was $97,800. That includes the $5,000 for engineering fees, a 20% contingency, and the roadway completion of $76,500. So, I would recommend that the board make a motion to set the surety to $100,000. I think that in past pending subdivisions, the surety amount, we're coming pretty close in regards to if there's any incomplete work that still needs to be done. So, I don't think that asking for $100,000 would be egregious, since it's slightly over what Derek recommended, but not by much.
What a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'd just like to look at the, is that in the Cole report?
Yeah, it's actually in there. If you put your hand down.
I haven't seen the numbers. It's also on your tablet.
Yeah. I have it in my planner's report too.
How many, how many lots are built on?
There's nine.
How many lots altogether?
Ten.
So, there's only one lot left to build?
Yep, lot ten. So, I anticipate that if this surety is agreed upon and the developer provides either a check or deposit for the amount agreed upon, then I would think that he would be coming back probably in August to request the release of lots on the line.
Cole. So, I may be missing something. I have the price for Fairhaven Excavator.
Yep, but the Cole report is right.
It's got a lot of information. See, it's covered a little bit.
It's not right there.
I mean, he must be posting the surety to release all those lots that built on it now, right? Then I'll release yet. You mean? So, the ones that are all built on already, they're not released yet?
No, none of them are.
So, this surety is so that he can release those nine lots? He must be kind of chomping at the bit to get that released.
Yes, yes.
My thing is, he's really close to having the whole subdivision complete.
He is, yes.
I think maybe we put some other condition on it. You know, because we just ran into, we're not having enough money to finish jobs. We just got lucky with my call. Like, if you post $100,000, you got, you got to finish this job within 12 months.
Yep, so, if you guys would, I have a Form G for you guys to endorse all subdivisions to sign. So, if you agree on the amount and vote on a timeframe, then you can put that in the Form G. I think a year would be ample time considering how speaking.
I mean, some of the other towns do wait 18 months, but where this is so far along.
Yeah.
Kind of what the economy is doing right now and what's happening and inflation. I don't want to get stuck having the town having.
Yeah, yeah.
Try to top.
Sean, I'm questioning whether the, so, we have, he agreed with the estimate of the paving from the contractor and added $2,000 and added a contingency of 20%, which comes up almost to the $100,000. In my experience, over many years, we always are low when things go wrong. We never have enough money. So, is $100,000 enough?
I've been down to the project, deciding, and it looks great. If the board finds that they need more, how much more would you like? I mean.
My thing is too, the site guy out there, he's very reputable. He's only going to do what the owner does as far as paying. I think they did, they did do a good job. They, they built all of these, well, again, they released, they got a lot at stake in this. I mean, it is close to finishing the whole thing. I mean, you only got one that's not built on. You could also do that, you could finish it. Be done with it, don't post any surety. I mean, if that's all he's got to do is pave it.
The developer is willing to post the surety, so if he's eager to do something.
He can't transfer the lots until.
He releases them.
Until we've released them.
Right, which I believe he is eager to do that by the next coming week.
I would think so.
So, the point is that you don't need a huge buffer because he's close to being done. So, I think the hundred, the hundred is a good figure with the 20% because he's so close to being done.
I'd like to say, like, say by, yeah, by this time next year. That way, we're not getting back into the end of the season. It's tough to pave and rushing around. Yeah, I mean, releasing all those other lots should be, he was, I don't want to say smart, but a good thing to do is when you get the lot released, just finish it off and be done with it. And you got another lot that you're not worrying about.
I think he plans on releasing lots on the line.
And we're still going to leave one lot plus the surety?
Yep.
Well, that'd be good.
Yes.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we set surety of four, wait, I'm going to get the agenda here. Surety for 431 Fisher Road, Stacy Lane at $100,000.
With a year?
Yeah, with a 12 months to finish.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next up is Little Lake, the 615 public hearing for Westport Horizons Development Corporation, Oak Ridge, file number 06-001 SP-Major. This is continued from February 22nd, 2022, April 19th, 2022, June 28th, 2022, and March 7th and May 16th of 2023.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before we start, I just want to tell you, great analysis on the first application. See, Fort River, I would make them go for the variance first, then come for the special permit. You're right with the Sitco case, it can go backwards.
Right.
And the jeopardy of that is, because I've had two of those for banks and I do their work, I turned down both of them. And one went for their variance, got it defined. The other one got denied because they didn't like the shifting of the land. So, they had to go back a second time for zoning variance to change the lot. Then they had to go back to the planning board to re-subdivide it based on that. So, I always tell these people they do it, go to the CBA first. Okay, so, my client asked me.
So, please identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Attorney Mark L. Levin, 138 Rock Street, Forest, Massachusetts, representing the former entity called Westport Horizon Development LLC. The principal, Richard LeBlank, asked me out of respect to come to you because he understands, and I'm not going to go through the whole lineage, we all know it. The sidewalks weren't put in. He hires a contractor to do that work. He didn't pay attention to it. Roads got built. Everything else got done. The town had money. They had inspections during that time when the road was being constructed. They didn't see the sidewalks being put in. How, I asked my client, he says, how did he even come to this after 12 years, after the company went out of business, we shut it down, they sold everything? Oh, Jimmy Hartman called me up and said, hey, we got a few thousand dollars of yours. Just bring your plan in, we'll release it. So, that's how it started, just so you understand. No one knew that this was a problem. I understand it was his responsibility. He didn't do it. The problem, as explained before, it's really an impossibility because you're going to change the grade of the road or raise the road or you have to drop the land on the front of the properties where they put in their water sprinklers and everything else. So, yes, it's a mess. I've explained my client that when he got his permit here, you acted as the special permit authority based on the zoning bylaws and pursuant to that under, on his page 31 of your bylaws. For his failure to do this, well, you can either revoke his permit, which you can't do because already people own it, or you can prevent him from doing any further subdivisions in the town until he rectifies it. He can't. The only thing I suggested to him, because it happened to me in Boston a week ago, driving through there, they have on the roadway, because obviously, there were a bike pass separately done in the city. They painted stripes down the side of the road, three to four feet. Bicycles and pedestrians walk through that thing. There's areas near the Boston Common, there's no streets they walk on, no sidewalks they walk on that. I suggested that to them. They can put these little knobbies in the, in the area every so often to make sure that a car who might hit it knows that they're strailing over it. And I asked them, would you be willing to do that? He says, absolutely. I mean, I don't know what else I can offer you. He understands he didn't do what he was supposed to do. And his penalty is, can't do anything in the town at any point. And then we get a building permit. He just, unfortunately, had someone quartered back then. It would have been easy when they would put in the road in the first time and grading everything to put the sidewalks in. It just became now a possibility to do it. Especially since that company has existed over these years. So, that's all I can really think of to do. He said he'll pay for it out of his own pocket because the companies know it there. Stripe him, put in some little knobbies, put some crosswalk type things in there. And because the road's 22 feet wide, you can put three, four feet and still complies with the size where a road would be without that bicycle or walking path. So, that's what he asked me. He said, listen, what's been good to me, I understand, I made a mistake, and I just can't cure it at this point in time. So, he asked me to come, and you know that.
Okay. Since our last meeting, we have asked for counsel from our town council to see what, what we could do, what the situation is with the company. And their reply is, and Amy will correct me if I get it wrong, but that Mr. LeBlank signed personally the application, not as president of the corporation. So, it, he is still liable for, for this, in their opinion. Second, they sort of admonished us that what we have before us is a major modification to either agree to remove the sidewalks from the plan or to not remove the sidewalks from the plan. Period. And that we have no authority to do anything else or intervene on in the, in the case with all the other issues that the Oak Ridge homeowners have. And they say that that's a civil matter between the two parties, not us.
Right, I agree.
And if we opine that the sidewalk, we're not going to remove the sidewalk requirement from the plan, then it's an issue with the building inspector or the zoning enforcement officer. So, the zoning enforcement officer would then have to deal with the issue of should there be a sidewalk or not and how it should go in. But we cannot, legally, we cannot.
I just.
All we can say is you can take the sidewalk off the plan or no, you can't take the sidewalk off the plan. So, which is something that I was a little surprised at, but that's what they, they tell us. So, Amy, maybe you can fill in?
So, you are correct in all that you presented. And I would recommend that tonight, the board close the public hearing, make a finding, and then vote on the modification to either approve of the elimination or deny the modification to keep the sidewalks on the road. I put some findings out that have been gone through in the public hearing process. My report, if you want me to read it out loud, I.
Please.
Would you do that?
Excuse me? Can we turn this panel up? It's really.
Great idea, yeah.
If somebody knows how to do it.
They get lots.
This is the air conditioning, it's not going to be nice.
I think it may be there.
I think it's the air conditioning.
Right. That's what it's there.
That's.
Okay.
Okay, so, what I've elaborated is the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw for assisted and independent living facilities is to provide a residential living environment that offers supportive services for people that either need supervision and/or assistance with basic activities within their daily life and/or offer congregate living arrangements to persons over the age of 55. The majority of the Oak Ridge condominiums are single-family and therefore are not connected to one another. During the public hearing process, numerous residents within the Oak Ridge community have expressed a need within the development for sidewalks, stating that the current absence of sidewalks creates an unsafe walking environment for the residents due to the speed of passing delivery vehicles that frequent the development and the lack of an ADA-compliant service to safely use for a means of getting from one facility or home to another. The elimination of sidewalks within the Oak Ridge development deviates from the intent of our zoning bylaw by failing to offer a basic supportive service for the residents by compromising their safety during a basic and necessary activity such as walking in the frantic community. The special permit that was issued in the planning board in 2006, under special permit criteria, lists that all paths were to be attractively designed for convenience, separation of vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian traffic, and adequate connectivity and completeness to access the amenities and facilities on-site and to pathways on adjacent sites. The current walking paths in the development are composed of crushed shells which lack stability and ADA compliance. During the public hearing process, numerous residents have stated safety concerns relating to the pathways that are established as being unstable and unsuitable for safe walking and handicapped use. and handicapped use. Given that the current pathways are not attractively designed for convenience, are unsafe and unusable by some of the handicapped residents, it renders the walking paths as deficient in providing adequate connectivity and completeness to access the amenities and facilities on-site. This deficiency deviates from special permit criteria at the time of the special permit approval and creates an environment where the residents cannot safely walk within the development on the walking paths to have access to amenities and facilities. Again, as we were advised with town council, all that the planning board can vote on is to approve or deny the applicant's request for the major modification to eliminate the sidewalks. And after going through the public hearing process, reading the intent of the zoning bylaw, and listening to the public and residents' comment, I would recommend that the planning board deny the major modification by the applicant to modify the special permit for the elimination of sidewalks within the Oak Ridge condominium.
Mr. Chair, so I'm going to offer two motions. The first one is going to be to close the public hearing. Because I think we've heard all of the arguments that, that we need to hear. And the second one is going to address the issue of sidewalks or not.
If I may mention one thing, I know he talked about a shelled area, but from what I understood, again, I wasn't involved with any of that other than making condo talks, that he went to the King to your board and asked that that be substituted for shells and it was approved by this board.
It's not in the decision.
It was subsequent. He came in subsequently and asked for approval. And I remember that was mentioned before, and the board said, "Yes, we remember him coming and asking." We did make that change. Again, I wasn't involved in it.
Our office has looked at a lot of minutes and spent a lot of office time trying to relocate where that situation may have occurred, date, time, public hearing, and nothing that we can see alludes to that. If it's not in a, it's not in the minutes that are accepted or approved, and it's not anywhere that we can like find in recording.
I just remember what we hear earlier this year, I don't know which board member said, "Yes, we did approve that." So, I know it was a board member that actually responded to that when Bill Smith was here saying that they came before the board and asked for that, and they said, "Yes, you can substitute for shells." And like, and then Bill says, "Well, just because you put it in 20 years ago doesn't mean you don't have to continually repay, you know, add to it and keep it in good shape." And this can't expect it to last forever, just like a roadway. But I, I know that was mentioned, you know, I don't know which board member mentioned that, yes, he, they came before him and they recall that, yes, they agreed to let him do that. That's all I remember. It doesn't matter either way, but I just wanted to point that out, that someone said from the board that they remembered it.
Well, I, I think I would like to respond to that. It was probably myself who talked about that, having remembered that there was a discussion in some planning board meeting about shells versus paved pathway, because the pathway was on the plan too. And I think at that time, whatever homeowners and whatever people were around, people said, "Okay, shells work out, out on that path as well, but not as a substitute for sidewalks."
No, no. I, I'm not saying, but I just mentioned it, like, he just, he didn't do anything right, but apparently he said he did ask for that. That's, that's all was mentioning. It's not that he didn't put the sidewalks, and we know that.
All right. So, if we had gotten this advice from town council back in February of 2022, we would have had many, many hours less discussion on this project because their advice is we're only to talk about sidewalks or not. And as you know, we have talked about many, many things. And I don't think that has been a waste because, as council said, those are subject to civil issues. And so, the discussion between the residents and Attorney Levin and the developer may produce answers. But as town council has said, they're, they were inappropriate in the planning board meetings. But I don't think they necessarily were a waste of time. I think they may, who knows, lead to answers. It's just that according to town council, weren't supposed to happen in, in our meetings. So, my first motion is to close the public hearing for file number 06-001 SP Major for Richard LeBlanc and Westport Horizon Development Corporation for the major modification to a special permit for the independent living facility known as Oak Ridge Condominiums.
Sir. Okay. Is there any discussion? Do we think we've heard enough in the previous meetings? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, my next motion is, may seem contradictory, but I'm advised that a motion needs to be made in the affirmative when my intent is to require that the developer install sidewalks for the reasons that the planner's recommendation lays out. So, I'm going to make a motion which I'm going to vote against. And so, that may seem strange, but I've probably done it before. So-
Before you make that motion-
Yeah.
Do anyone from the board want to make additional findings from what I've read?
That's a good question.
Maybe we should make a motion to accept the findings.
That's a great idea. I move to accept the findings laid out by the assistant planner.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, I move to accept the major modification of the original special permit, independent living facility and associated site plan for Richard LeBlanc and Westport Horizon Development Corporation, file number 06-001 SP-Dash-major-known-as-Oak Ridge Condominiums for the elimination of sidewalks. That needs a second.
We need a second, at least for discussion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So, as I said, for the reasons of the findings, I'm going to vote no against my motion because I think, I, I think that for all the reasons stated, and that we have endorsed in similar developments that should be built in the future, this should require sidewalks. Now, let us suppose that the developer and the residents come up with an answer that doesn't involve the construction of sidewalks, whether it's what Attorney Levin laid out or something else. Then, as the council said and as the chairman said, this is a matter of enforcement, you know. They, they, the developer will be in technical violation, but it's up to the building inspector, not us, to decide. There are all kinds of violations throughout Westport. Which violations the building inspector wants to enforce and which ones he doesn't want to enforce. And so, if there's painted sidewalks that do the job and the residents are happy with it, or there's some other answer that the discussions that have taken place back and forth, or the discussions that take place in the future that solves the problem, and so the residents are happy with, with what happens, that, then the building inspector may choose not to enforce. But if this is voted down, what the developer has hanging over his head is he's required to put in sidewalks. And that's difficult to do, but he, he would be required to put in the sidewalks. And if he can find out or work with the residents some other way to do that than put in the sidewalks, then great. But that's not before us. Ours is only to decide whether it's required to put in sidewalks or not.
Any more discussion?
I'd just say that, I mean, I've never been a fan of sidewalks in rural areas, but I think that this is not a rural area. This is a, this is a subdivision where there's a cluster of houses, and I think they, our bylaw requires a sidewalk in any subdivision of more than 20 houses.
What does this-
It was done for a good reason because of a number of issues, public safety being foremost, that we just mentioned, access for handicapped people, elderly, young kids and all of that, the safety issue. So, in, in cases like, communities like this, it's not only an issue of public safety, I think it's also great for the fostering a sense of community and neighborliness, neighborliness, because people feel comfortable walking up and down the roads, the streets, using the sidewalk, saying hi to their neighbors and so forth. And I think it's, it's perilous if, if there are no sidewalks. But strictly from the point of view of enforcing the, the decision which was made by the board based on the application which was submitted, I think that the sidewalks need to be installed.
Anybody else?
I agree.
So, a yes vote is to eliminate the sidewalk requirement, and a no vote is to require the sidewalks as originally. So, all those in favor? Hearing none. All those against?
No.
No.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Thanks, darn well.
Assistant planners report?
Well done, Amy, by the way.
Yes. Okay. So, I reached out to Frank Detchell for the harbor water study because I believe the collection of the data waters has been done, but I haven't heard back about any of the data that the data waters have collected. So, I don't have an update of what was found. I don't have a report in Frank or anything. He hasn't had time to be back.
I have some information from the folks in the harbor. The information that Frank gave them was the water was good and appears to be sufficient quantity to be able to do it, and they have subsequently started testing the neighboring wells as they draw down on these test wells to make sure that they're not depleting the neighbor's wells. And that the Coaxit, if that's what they're called, the Coaxit Water Company is going to hire Frank, Frank's company to go forward instead of using the original people that they were using.
That's it. So-
So, I'm sure you'll hear Frank about all that.
Yes. We should probably call, speak about scheduling, maybe a meeting soon so we can go look at the data. With Farago, for the Brooklyn Drive Solar, the applicant submitted photos of the grass vegetation growing on-site. So, I did get in contact with SW Coal to do a site visit and make sure that it's adequate vegetative growth. And Derek did perform a site visit today and say that there is adequate vegetative growth on-site. So, he will have a report ready for me by the end of this week. So, I would expect that on the next agenda, there would be a request from Farago to give up the $50,000 we have for the surety for the vegetation since it is up to par with what we expected and needed from them. For the repurposing of the old high school, I did get and talk to Grant King again. The Kevin Hand, the Homeland Security Manager and the leader of surface drone program and 3D modeling work, he's currently actually doing a job in Taunton for their school system, doing 3D modeling and blueprint layout for, for those buildings. So, he's still unavailable at the moment, but I asked Grant for a quote for both of those items, both for the 3D walkthrough tour and the blueprint documents. So, he will provide me with a quote for that in about two weeks or so.
Okay.
Excuse me. Could you also ask him if he, after he gives us a quote about how long he, when he could do it?
Yeah.
How long it would take to get completed? That'd be great. Thanks.
Yes. Before I forget, if you guys could sign this for Oak Ridge decision. And the rest of my report was basically all of Oak Ridge. So, we already covered Stacy Lane, I worked with her for a part. Yep. That's all you have.
All right. First update I have is a couple of, couple of updates on our salt marsh grants that we were looking at. We've been working with EA Engineering and SERPED to potentially apply to a coastal resilience grant for two different projects. One was to study salt marshes for their migration potential. After we met with the Westport River Watershed Alliance, they let us know that the Mass Coastal Resilience Program has been working on modeling this marsh migration, these potential corridors. And that was essentially what we were going to apply to develop it. So, we're going to meet with their staff probably later on this month to see where that project's at. And if it's not ready to, you know, give, give some of that data off to municipalities, you know, if they haven't developed Westport yet, we had, we've discussed, well, maybe we apply for a different grant and just apply for a CZM grant next year and say, "Hey, well, we'll do this work, we'll do it to your standards, but, you know, we want to get things moving on this." So, kind of slowly keeping the ball moving on, on that pace. And then with EA Engineering, they were helping us look into developing a proposal to the Army Corps of Engineers. There's going to be a, some dredging in the harbor that the Army Corps is going to be undertaking. And so, they, they would be getting together a proposal to, a proposal to demonstrate a beneficial reuse of those, of the sediment material. And they, they didn't end up applying or helping us apply to the CZM grant that was due, it was all due yesterday. The turnaround time was going to be a little bit quick for them to do a literature review and see what other kind of data that, you know, Buzzards Bay Coalition has and whatnot. Because they wanted to develop a baseline of, of data and for that future analysis. So, and slow progress, probably obviously not doing the CZM grants this year, but maybe next year, or other grants that may come up throughout the year. Jim, you'll be, I've copied you on some of those emails. You'll, you'll get an invite to the next meeting that we'll have with, with the Mass Coastal Resilience Program.
Just as a, an aside, CZM has been getting to this coastal surveying of what's going on on the coast. They've told us they're doing it for about 14 years, so it, it may take some more time. I'm not sure how long it'll take.
So, so we may end up going in- So we may end up going in a different direction than relying on the, okay, but we'll see what that looks like when we. Next, on my report, Serped gave us a whole set of drone photos, I just want to let you know that they're all out there.
Very cool photos.
Yeah, it was really nice of them to come out and take those and provide us all of the photos to use, just if you use them for anything, just make sure you give Serped attribution. And then our next rezoning meeting for the Route Six rezoning project with BSC Group, I asked, I asked the consultant to do a handful of revisions to the presentation. The presentation is a draft of what would be presented at the first public meeting for that project. And there are a handful of things that I'd like to see changed to it and so I thought it would be better to have the consultant come down here when that is put together and we can have a discussion about kind of a more final draft presentation. So I haven't heard back from Russ this week, so hopefully we can pencil something in next week. And that's all I got.
Okay, correspondence.
We don't have any.
Oh. Minutes from June 27?
The minutes, yeah, the minutes were incomplete, we had sent them around, so we'll move that to the next meeting in August.
Okay.
I noticed I wasn't at the meeting and it still took you till 8:00 PM, so I figured, I figured you guys would adjourn a lot sooner without me.
Okay. You're the guy who pushes this. And that's why it took too late, you weren't there. So you certainly move along things. So short and long, long-term planning discussions. The issue of the short-term rentals, we had two members opine that they would be happy to do that, I don't know if happy, but they would do it.
Amy has an update for that, too.
I don't know when that's going to be.
So actually, the Board of Health last night voted Tanya Ryden to be the representative from the Board of Health and the zoning board, they're officially going to have their two members, that'll be on the agenda for next week. So I drafted a letter to the Select Board requesting the creation of the committee and also the appointment of those said people, kind of just a one and done letter all at once.
Right.
So that'll be submitted once zoning board votes there.
All right, and then I'd like to revisit, I got a note from Mark Rasmussen asking how our funding for our water and sewer is going. And I replied, I forget to mention the Mass Works grant that we also, we applied for recently, but it just comes back to me that time is running and I don't know that the water infrastructure or the infrastructure committee has been meeting or what's going on myself. And we really need to figure out where we're going to get the money because it is, I think it's pretty unsure whether we'll get the congressionally directed funds. And then if we don't get that, we may get some money from Mass Works, but then again we may not. And I think we have to figure out where else we can go for money because we can't do it all on our own.
I think, I think we were tasked with getting a complete plan that we still don't have yet, right? Permitted documents. And we were going to start looking further. I'm kind of proposing to get on as, remove myself from that committee and put an alternate in there. I have somebody that has ties to Fall River that has inherited and retired to Westport and lives on the Watupaw. So he's looking, and I'll still be available like to be an alternate, but let him get in there. So he also brought to my attention, there's like an over 55 project on the Watupaw in Tiverton that federal money paid for the sewer out of Fall River over there. So I think we got some avenues that way. I talked to Senator Rodrick's and he's, he seemed a little disappointed in how we've been moving forward and thinks that we're kind of sitting. Says he can get us more money and we're sitting on the money that we have. I think we really need to move forward with designing another loop, you know, like we had talked about around the Mackumber and, you know, we got money sitting there, I don't think that's too expensive. He also said that there is a study in preliminary design that I gotta believe that Kinefeld also has, you know, when he looked at the whole thing and the trunk lines to accommodate all this stuff, that that study for the loop around the Watupaw is there. Because I think we need to go looking for the, for the money around, for the Watupaw, I think we gotta go towards Fall River, drinking water and all of that, you know, like Fall River's doing the Sucker Brook Reclamation, Tiverton's doing a big stormwater plan, you know, along with that UMass study. I mean, I think we can, and I've also reached out to Paul Furlan, who's in charge of the infrastructure over there, Danny Yagya, who's the engineer, I mean, we got all these people on board to like move forward. What I, what I'm, I had a long talk with Roger after our last meeting and I, I really like him, I think he's doing a good job. I did find out that he's from Fall River, he lives in Rainham now, so it's kind of like boots on the ground, so I was, I was very impressed with what he had to say. But I think what we need to do, and I'm looking to do this pretty soon, is move forward with, get on the Selectman's agenda to hire a town engineer so that, you know, whether we, how we get the money for the town engineer, I think we could probably use some of this upper money, like what Mike said is, he can get us more and he wants to see us move forward with it, that can coordinate some of these smaller links. I mean, I know we want to get this trunk line in and we don't have the money yet, but I need, what we were tasked with doing is getting the plan and then we're going to look for the money. I'm not worried about getting turned down in a town meeting for not having the money, I think we need to have.
But we have the plan, right? We have, the plan is 95% done?
Oh, yes, the plan in the first phase is 100% done. We've got the state permit for, or the Mastod permit.
A little bit of red tape with the inter-basin transfer.
The inter-basin transfer will get, will get resolved. It is, we don't have that permit yet. And Roger has drafted the, you know, seeking, you know, both the sewer and water loans under the state revolving fund. And the question really comes, what do we ask for, since they're loans? Do we, you know, to really have a wastewater impact, you have to at least reach into Bread and Cheese Brook. And as my colleague rightly said, you know, we really need to reach into the neighborhoods, you know, that's, that's where the demand is. We're putting in the spine, but all the people live on the ribs.
My concern is that if, if, I know that we have pushed from our senator to do Route Six and get that done, but we're not going to have enough customers along, just along Route Six to pay for it.
If we do, that's, if we do the first phase, there's already water there, if we do just up to 88, there are not enough customers there. It's, it's, it's something that has to be done because it is the connection to Fall River, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide an enormous amount of benefits. It's a critical piece, but it doesn't serve many people. But once it's in place, it will serve everyone.
Right, no, I understand, but, so I guess the question that I have is, at the same time we're trying to get the first section, shouldn't we be trying to get that first neighborhood too that's connected to that first section? So between Briggs Road and Route Six and 88 and Sanford Road?
And because the water monies and the sewer monies are separately appropriated by the federal government and distributed to the towns, that is, there's both the clean water and the drinking water monies. So that as, as we've all experienced, you know, looking at sort of self-contained communities like Catman's Neck, the real desire is to have an adequate water supply and less so on the wastewater side. And that's understandable, but, you know, so we should be, we should be pursuing both of those things and, and, you know, a water loop that reaches to the Mackumber school, it can have significant benefits there. And then, and that's a relatively easy piece to do.
Again, like what I, what I was getting at is, again, I want to talk Route Six as the trunk line and then all of these other things throughout the whole town are going to be contracts, we got three contracts on Route Six. And then we look to, so let's say, hey, we got, our bid documents are ready for, if we didn't get the money this year, they're sitting there, they're ready, we keep moving forward. I mean, if we get the first contract in, we get the first contract in. That could spur drinking water stuff from the Watupaw stuff, you know, if we got design over there, you know, maybe it might be one, not one, two, three down Route Six, it might be contract one and then contract two is going to Watupaw, Mackumber, something like that. But I think the whole trunk line is going to spur the stuff down and, and the stuff off of Ford Road, you got a big parcel over there that's been a lot of people looking at. You know, it was kind of like the article that was in, in the shorelines, I was a little disappointed when they took a picture of the storage facility, you know, we're talking about what we're trying to do with this sewer, you know, and I've been trying to push like we want, we want, we need to get it out there, you know, we're looking to responsibly redevelop Route Six. We're never going to be Dartmouth, we're going to be, you know, some more shops and restaurants and some things like that on Route Six, we have some anchors. You get the first phase in, I mean, look at what La Francis did with the hotels, as soon as you come into town, I mean, we're doing an article in the paper that shows the storage facility, you got La Francis, you got, as soon as that trunk line comes in, you got, you got Edgewater, which Edgewater septic has reached its limit.
Right.
They need to replace it. That developer is willing to invest more, he has the old freight building, he'll build another building just like that. Somebody has purchased behind Port Sadat where they have the old hotel with all those apartments and they're all, but he's looking to demo that and rebuild that. It's, one of the parcels across the street got sold, I mean, there's a lot of things that this is going to spur and I can guarantee you, you get that first phase in coming up there, Carrigs will run that line up board and street, you know, I mean, you're going to get developers that'll start doing that. My, my concern is coming, coming down like, you know, I'm, I'm further down, I'm on the Bread and Cheese Brook. My street coming in the back, I mean, I come in off of Gifford, but all the, all the properties in the back, I probably have, Crane Ave has maybe seven of my butters have cesspools. We're talking the 800th Street. We got, we got, the Board of Health making these people replace these cesspools now. The bank, they're holding $55,000, one just got sold, one of the, you know, one of the seniors on World War II veteran, he just passed away, sold his house, somebody I know bought it, they made him put $55,000 in, the bank told him, if you don't come and do it within a year, I'm sending a contractor up there and doing it. He went, did it with another local guy himself, because he's in the business, and it ended up costing him like $35,000. But you get all, these, you know, these neighbors can come up that street, we have a town engineer that can, you know, draw these little sewer main extensions, it's going to spur off, because this is 30 years in the, in the making that's been delayed.
Well, Manny, you're making a lot of different points and one of them is, how does the town handle the requirement to replace cesspools when they're going to get sewer within 15 years? So, or 10 years or five years or something like that? I think, you know, I think the Board of Health is of the opinion that they can say, well, we'll just give you a waiver because you put a new system in for 20 years of the life of the system before you have to tie in. But once we have a water and sewer commission, the Board of Health will have no say when they're going to have to tie in. So, I mean, so I think we need to have a discussion at the town level about who's doing what and who, how, how can we deal with this issue when we go to town meeting next year for money for the sewer and people say, well, I just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote for that, I just put a new septic system in.
The letters that went out, the Board of Health letters that went out, I think what the Board of Health should be taking, in my opinion, Title V, I mean, Board of Health, if they want credit to clean the river, you can have credit to clean the river, I really don't care, I just don't want our residents doing things that aren't going to make, aren't going to help spend the money. I, I, I just need a.
Yeah, but especially the problem is that it's the people who can least afford it who are going to be in this situation. So you have to take that into account, you can't just say, like the Board of Health does, you've got to do it, you know, somebody who's on $30,000 a year or less has no ability to do anything. So how do you, how do you do that? I mean.
So, you know, one of the other things in that article was, you know, one fellow Selectman, he said, you know, he wants to see more young people move to town. I want to see our young people be able to stay in town.
Yes.
And I want to see our seniors finish our time gap. Title V grandfathered the seniors, their cesspools until the land was transferred. Our integrated water plant recommends that they target the ones that were transferred and didn't do the upgrade, so there was plenty of those. I mean, I have someone on my laneway that was a pre-existing non-conformant use that uses my laneway to get in and out because they, they sold the barn in front, turned it into a house and he lost his furniture before, whatever, so he's a retired school teacher, he's 80 years old, he has five acres of land, he has an artesian well with no nitrogen in it, it's a five-bedroom house, he lives by himself and he has a cesspool. He got one of those letters. He didn't need that address. And I got another friend who runs, runs one of the pumping companies, he says, I have an 84-year-old woman, she, she, I pump her cesspool every year, it functions, go and pull solids out of it, she, her husband passed away a couple of years ago, she's, he's the one that took care of the maintenance around the house, she's on a reverse mortgage in her house, she gets one of these letters. He said, I pumped her cesspool, she called me, she got the letter, she said, I need you out here right away, she was crying. Those are the kind of stories I don't want to hear.
It is, Bob and I met with the real estate lady that's over here and she talked about that area that I'm talking about between 88 and Sanford Road and Route Six and Bridge. And she said that they're some of the poorest people on the South Coast who live there and they bought a house back in the 40s. And they're still living there and they can't afford anything. I mean, we know from the census data that the average income in that area is 68% of the state average, which means that they're, they're earning less than $30,000 a year. So even if you give them a waiver to not fix the. So even if you give them a waiver to not fix their cesspool, but because the sewer's coming, and even if we get the betterment down to 15,000, they can't afford that. And then they can't afford the $1,000 a year for water and sewer. So we really have to address these issues somehow as we're doing this. Otherwise, those people are not going to vote for this. And that's a big voting block in this town. And we need to figure out how to, how to do this as a town and not just.
The, the numbers are live. This is, this has been an issue that has not had action forever. And, you know, if we, if we were to provide water and sewer in off Westport, it's 60, 70 million dollars over 15, 20-year period. That's, that's what they, what the costs are. And even to take the first steps, if we don't have significant grant money, even, even modest first steps approach 25 million. So you got, you know, the very first stretch of putting the spine in is, is seven and a half. To reach Bread and Cheese Brook brings you to about 22. If we, then, then you've got the infrastructure in Route Six in which you can reach into the neighborhoods. And, and that doesn't get you to the far end of Route Six, but it gets you, so now you can do loops, water loops that capture the Mackumber School, get up through the neighborhoods. We, we can run a trunk line down along Bread and Cheese Brook and pick up all those homes that are in the back. So you can start to do that. But, you know, I mean, the, the simple words are, can you go to a town meeting and borrow? Can you go to a town meeting in May of '24 and borrow 25 million dollars? Is anybody up for doing that? If they're up for doing that, we can do it. If, if no one is up for doing that, then, you know, we just stand on the street corner shaking our coffee cup until someone throws in 25 million. And if no one does that, we don't do anything. I mean, it's, it's, we, we can get some grants, we can get some debt forgiveness. I think we can play all of that. We can play effectively, we can use the profile of the community that we're trying to help, the economic profile of the community we're trying to help, to get some debt forgiveness. So maybe the 25 that we need to borrow, they forgive seven or something. But it's not, it's not a grant for 25 million. So that's, that, that's the, that's the issue. But if we had that amount of money, you, you then could begin really having a significant impact. And people, then I think, the, the issue of the Board of Health acting to do cesspools, now, now the sewer and the water is real. They can see it coming. There is a program, the money is in hand. Then you can go and say, well, don't, don't upgrade. Two years from now, you're going to have a sewer. If we, if we play in that game, that allows us to uncouple that. But if, if we don't, and then DEP said, well, what, what steps are you taking? I said, well, we don't, we don't have any money. You know, that, that defense is not going to work.
So there's a water line presently that runs down Route Six as far, from Fall River to Route 88?
Just goes, goes to Davis Road.
It makes it up to the housing.
Well, can that be, is that at least adequate to unloops off of that to whatever it is?
Yes, yes.
I mean, is that a, I mean, that's a smaller bite.
Yep.
But it gets you the drinking water side, which is a benefit.
That's why we should pursue both water money and sewer money.
Yeah, but if you, if the whole thing, I'm just, you know, wondering if, at least if you try to develop the engineering plans to do the water loops off of that existing line and get them and secure the monies to do the construction.
No, we should, we should have been doing that for the last, the last 30 years. We should have been doing a little piece every year, and that would have been completed already. But for some reason, you know, and, and I've talked to people at DEP that were responsible. One of them's still there when that happened, you know, and he's like, we handed it to Westport. Like, when, when, that was put in because of Resol, not. So it was continuing, they tracked it down, they, they came out, they told people not to drink their water, they gave them bottled water, they got the town the money for the water. And the town says, boom, they, they actually physically got it built for us.
Yeah, they got it built, but they charged us a useless amount of money for the water. Why do we pay for that?
Was the DEP, right, well, I mean, that's nothing. If it was because of that, that probably was, Responsible Party is still cleaning up Resol. Maybe we can look in that direction. I mean, that's, it's the lid, that's.
I mean, if the only reason that they're on the water is because of that, for no fault of their own, should they be paying all these years for this water? And should the town, I think we still have a million-dollar odd bill that Fall River is trying to get from us for, for dumping water on the ground because it's contaminated.
We, we have so few customers in the water system. They have to bleed the water system so that the water stays within the DEP age, age of water. That is, you can't let the water sit in the pipeline for, for years without drinking it. It becomes undrinkable, just out of the chemical exchanges with the pipeline.
Yeah, I mean. Ready for a motion to adjourn?
Well, I'd like to just make one more comment on that, because, because we have that issue coming out of Fall River. So, and you know the DEP wants rezoning.
I'd love to get to the override meeting.
Dartmouth, Dartmouth was, was fined twice last year for residents' time on their back line on one heading towards like Beadham Road.
Move to adjourn.
There's a second, second, all those are papers.
Hi.